Okay, we're good to go. Sorry about that.
Okay, okay, thank you. All right, all right. Well, do we need to start over or?
Uh, no, I think we'll continue from, okay, sounds good. Rich, go ahead.
We have folks started a rock run last week in their section. The MC is continuing theirs. Fifty, sixty percent not open the west side. Never heard anything from partner yet, but they've got their time on. Uh, I guess I was informed this morning by Russ that last week Dixon Construction called. They might want to start that 390th Street Bridge late August. So we'll be starting then. Yeah, I know.
Oh.
We can't always.
I hear that.
We can't always pick when we want to.
I know. How long is that project supposed to be?
Um, I'm trying to remember if that's the, that's the precast beam one. It, I don't know. I can't remember how many working days are on it. We'll see. I mean, depends. That's what they want to, but whether or not they do.
Slightly earlier fall.
Be more killed deer traffic.
Well, just, it's just not, it's, it's right, right. I mean, it's kind of a, yeah. But and then PCI was looking at 350th Street, the box cover down there probably in August also. So I haven't heard anything from Flynn yet on 105. Last we had talked, it was going to be late July.
Okay. Can you keep me posted please? So I need to just get a buggy and then done, but.
Oh.
Probably, yeah, at some point.
You know, they're concerned about their casino there when that starts too, so.
Yeah, I mean, should, we should be out of their way anyway, but.
It's pretty much on schedule anyway for late July, early August, probably something like, yeah.
But I mean, as far as.
Start from there or anything?
They'll probably end there. They'll start.
Start work your way back.
Yeah, like.
Okay.
Set up fireworks stand there, so.
Oh, I suppose.
Yeah, so this whole is like.
Gotcha.
Yeah, and then next week, I guess I got some things while I was out last week. I've got a preconstruction agreement. We talked about this a while ago. The state's going to pave shoulders on 05, or I wish it was zero, on Highway nine. And we were going to have them pave our gravel intersection. So I got an agreement. We can put that on again next week. Their projected costs are, it was around nineteen thousand and somewhat change there. Nineteen thousand four hundred and thirty dollars.
Those three intersections.
Uh, there's more than. Whether it's, if you want to look at the leg, the side legs, there's one, two, there's six locations. So yeah.
Three intersections north side.
It'd be on, uh. By. They got blocked out.
Fine arrows in.
Yeah, by.
Drush.
Warbler, Yarrow. So I'll have that. I'll give this Jackie. And then we also have a agreement for February bridge swap money for bridge on S thirty-four over El Creek. We got some repairs to do on that one at WHGS, doing it as it's a back wall abutment work and then fixing some beam joints along the travel portion. So that plans are already been turned in for that. We just have to get the agreement signed. So that's what's upcoming for next week. I'll just get these to Jackie. She can put them on. Other than I think we're going to round up some of our old equipment, see what we can get running and look for selling some of that stuff here hopefully by fall. Jump layer on, do some house cleaning there and since the new budget's in here, we'll look at what we got for upcoming equipment. It sounds like buying equipment's still got a long lead time. I was talking to
some parts.
Well, I was talking, yeah, I was talking to City Mason City, one of their guys. I was looking for a manhole adjustment bring it guy. Then I over there some different. About a year out for trucks. And I don't know if it's the manufacturers or it's the parts or whatever.
It's combination of both.
I order a lot more in May or in March. I won't see it till August. So anyway, I think we'll start looking at some things that we've got some design work to do. We're starting to design on Wheelie Wood North, the casino for next year. A lot of little bridge stuff. We need to start getting designed out to some smaller stuff, some things. Okay. We've got a lot of, we got a big workload. We just get busy in the summer with construction. So we try to squeeze everything in. So we're busy up there. We're just trying to get stuff pushed out. So I've got for updates.
Is there anything for Rich? Okay, thank you, sir.
All right.
Uh, Steve, Steve Peterson, first responder and bring in the backup triathlon.
Morning.
Do you want to pop it up?
I just sent the email. Pression.
It's a share.
Better.
Hmm?
Should wait for a.
Yeah, if you want to wait.
When do you want first?
No, twenty-one first you.
Uh, either bike one or bike two. Wire. If you wanted to pass it around or any.
Oh.
Just grab one.
Zoom it up.
Is which one? These are.
That's, that's actually the running path.
I probably want to share it too.
Yeah.
You just.
Now try. Yep.
So, yeah, my name is Steve Peterson and I resident here in Northwood. Grew up in the area and graduated high school and lived around the state. I work in law enforcement, have twenty-five years in law enforcement, and actually eight years in the, in the military in the US Army quite a few years ago. And so over the years I've participated in triathlons. A triathlon is swimming and biking and running. I was in a first responder type triathlon in North Minnesota and I thought, well, maybe we could try it here in a smaller community. I know it's kind of a tougher sell in this area because most people don't even really, they're just not familiar with triathlons. But there is a passionate group that do this sport. If you, if you travel to the events, there's usually a pretty good contingency that do it. So I thought I'd give it a try here in Northwood and it's, I've had it, the registration sign up for about two or three months now. And I'm pretty happy with progress. Right now about fifty registrants signed up. And they're from quite a distance away. There's a few local people that are going to do it. A lot of me city Clear Lake people, but I do have people as far away as Des Moines, Iowa City, Burlington, which I think that's about a four hour drive. Madison, Wisconsin, Rochester, Minnesota. So definitely bringing some people into the area that have never been here before. It's on July thirty-first and it's going to start at nine AM. And probably I, it's hard to estimate exactly when it will be over, but you know, eleven to eleven thirty. And like I said, they'll start at the pool. They're going to do hundred fifty meter swim. And then there's what's called transition area where you get out of the swimming pool and run down to a bike area. You hop on your bike and that's about eleven mile ride. And that's where maybe you guys come in because it's going to go out into the county, of course. And then there's a turnaround point and they come back and they finish up with a five K or approximately a three mile run in Northwood. The bike portion, like I said, starts at the swimming pool and basically it's going to go straight north. My eyes are not good, but you turn right before that bridge by duck. Yeah. And turn left, go by the sawmill, turn left again by the golf course and turn left again that the road that takes you to Ochola Park. And then just, just a little bit farther past Ochola going south and will be the turnaround point. And yeah, then coming back, I met with the Northwood City Council a couple of times, a brief sheriff bank. Talked last week about as far as vehicle, vehicles that he could potentially use for traffic issues. He also recommended talking to the Iowa DOT. I have a call in with them right now and just wait a call back. We, we were maybe hoping at the biodiff area just because it's a you know, people tend to drive pretty fast or that he'll come back into Northwood if we could maybe have a truck with a a safety sign or a bike, bikes ahead to, to slow down. So we'll, we'll see what they say, but that's what's happening right now. And I'd be happy to entertain any questions or concerns.
Certainly.
It's a great idea.
Bringing in people here. Appreciate.
As a first responder myself, but it's a great idea. So.
Absolutely.
Yeah. So you're going to participate.
You bet.
Hand out water.
I'll be the guy that pulls the trigger at the start.
Yeah.
Moral support. So, you know, it's a great idea. And, and yeah, if you got fifty people coming in kind of all over the place.
Yeah, and I, and I'm having a professional company that's doing the timing because the timing's kind of complex. They go have like an ankle bracelet and you know, some people are you know, I'm not as intuitive as some people, but they, they want exact times on their splits and how long they're in the transition area and how long it takes them to get out. And then afterwards, we're going to have some awards for age, you know, break it down for like twenty to twenty-nine year olds, thirty, thirty-nine and upwards. So, yeah, that's basically it. Um, yeah, hope to be done out of the pool area by eleven thirty, twelve, but as far as the, the road bike itself in the country, you know, it's, it's early on in the race. So hopefully that, that's not going to take up too much traffic time. And Saturday morning, hoping there's not a lot of traffic. We talked about potential trucks, rock trucks or something coming through town, but.
A lot of them on Saturday.
Not that much, not on Saturdays. There's still quite a little bit. We did call and talk to Russ though. There is some potholes that he would like looked at going out that route that bikes did hit. So Russ and him had communicated because you were gone.
Cool question.
What do you want to do on the, the turnaround section there on now?
It's a, it's a good question. I, I'm going to have someone out there. I, I didn't know if it'd be okay to, to have a, a pylon like on the center of the road if.
Well, we could, uh, we could put some staggered barricades out to keep, I mean, really warn traffic has slowed down. You can stagger barricades. Not, you know, kind of south where you're turning around that, but at least keep traffic aware of something happening for a small amount of time. I don't know how, you know, what kind of a gap you've got between you know, people that are running first. I don't know what that span is for those barricades, but they could be laying there. And so we could set them up in the morning at least. It would keep people a little bit aware of what's happening on that end because you aren't turning around. I don't know if I can't tell for sure. It doesn't look like it's had an intersection. It's kind of the.
I'm gonna, I'm going to move it back. There's a gravel road right there. And it's thinking, I, I don't want to mess with any more roads than I have to. So maybe I'm just going to move that a little bit further north. So it's, I, I doubt that gravel road gets a lot of traffic, but just to avoid any extra issues. So.
That's probably Mark's Hill.
That's what.
That's further down.
Oh, yeah, Marshall here. So that would have been for. Return.
First gravel road just south of Ochola, but I was going to try to move it back a little bit shorter.
And Mark's Hill is the first one.
Mark's Hill is the only gravel road.
Yeah. You can turn around.
So somewhere right.
We could put the barricades at Mark's Hill that way people.
I just don't.
That way they're just there so they can set them up. I don't know, wouldn't really have to say real close, but I don't know if there's a sign that triathlon of progress. We do, uh, well, now that we're going to do that here, we have that main to main marathon adventure county and that's a little bit more intense. I think these are bikes. They're going to be travel a little faster than a bunch of people jogging, but maybe we can have stuff set now. People want to set things up. Okay, I mean, if you have a request for some super traffic devices and locations.
Okay.
The, uh, the race timer person that you can sign up all the way until the day of the race. He, he thought we could still get maybe upwards of seventy to seventy-five people. So. We'll see what happens, but, uh, yeah, so far it's been, it's been, I'm, I'm happy with the turnout. I was a little worried initially. People were kind of a little slow to sign up, but in June it just kind of took off and now I'm very comfortable with the numbers and, uh, yeah, just looking forward to a smooth event that day. So.
Dan, did you have? Were you going to be doing anything as far as?
I am tied up with another function, but I got Brian Olson that I put in charge as far as full-time deputies and that several reserves are getting together for traffic control in different areas because we got to worry about the run in town also.
Right. So is this something that you plan on doing every year or?
Hope me to. Yeah, we'll, we'll see how it goes or how, how many headaches there are from this.
Well, and just based on our experience in which coming with the marathon each year, we just grows. We got better and better at figuring out trouble. Well, we, we thought we got better at better at traffic control. So I mean, it's going to be a learning process. Being on bikes is a lot different than, uh, runners all over the highway, but.
That'll be in town.
That right. That's less of my concern, but I just know in Mitchell County each year we get, a lot of people don't like to pay attention to, to road code signs anyway. So. Well.
This isn't as heavily.
Right. It's not as heavily traveled as part of the marathon. It'd probably be less, but I think if we could provide some barricades at least on the alert stretch there, approach side to keep people.
Just to slow them down, nothing else, right?
We can see. Rest of the route, I guess. I don't know. You have people going to the golf courses and.
But Amish.
They can pass the buggies on the bikes, but.
My only other thing that says probably gonna I'm sure I would hope it's not an issue, but I, I'm literally going to take a broom or something because like at the country club, bro, there's this few roads where there's a bunch of gravel that.
We could probably, we got a sweeper truck. We could probably.
Okay.
Get that cleaned up.
Okay.
That'd be great.
This is the thirty.
We'll do it on Friday, right?
Saturday, Friday.
Friday. That took care of ninety percent of it.
Yeah, that'd be fantastic.
Run our truck down that route, not the intersections too. We can just kind of make sure it's.
Okay.
Clean and debris.
Thank you.
Do you have an events page?
I do. If you, if you, the easiest way is probably just to Google Northwood Iowa triathlon. Um, but that's kind of my events page. I maybe I need to talk to you, but I don't know how to do a setup a website. So the, the timing guy said uh, their, their site has a free availability for what's, I just don't know how to do that stuff, but.
Do you have a Facebook page though?
Facebook page and, uh, yeah, just the actual event. Yeah, Google Northwood Iowa triathlon. That takes you right to the main page. So.
Right.
Yeah, and money raised, uh, it's nothing is for personal issues that it's someone's going to the sheriff's office, fire department and some other nonprofits in Northwood. And then I also have a donation page. Here we go to, uh, there was a trooper. I work with Department of Public Safety. We had a trooper killed a couple of months ago. And like half the donations, but, uh, his family and the other half, there's a Cox Foundation. They help support like funerals and maybe you know, you could talk more about that than I could, but they, it's a good organization. So.
Yeah, more you can get it out to everybody. Social media spreads like wildflower, you know?
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah, we'll share it off our pages.
Of the comments.
Yeah.
You bet. Definitely. Yeah, if you're working with these guys, they'll be the ones that over there to control or. Don't, I don't problem with it. It's fantastic deal. So, okay, thank you. Thank you, Steve. Appreciate it. Thanks.
Cause now we'll have something up there. Okay.
Drainage. See, there was claims.
Hey Steve.
Yeah.
Uh, when we're back, I just texted and welcome to most of that radio on one of the review spots.
Yeah, sure.
So when we're back, which are the.
Yeah.
So. He's on radio once a week. Promote on the radio events.
Oh.
Spots.
Okay.
So if you just get a.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Put it on the local cable like WCTA thing to.
I have.
Free deal.
It's a free deal.
It's free deal.
Okay.
Talk to them that basis on whoever has cable.
Sure.
Great.
It's my interest.
Yes, thank you.
No. Uh, okay. Drainage claims. You guys have any questions or concerns?
I'll make motion for drainage.
Okay. A second. Say it. Any other discussion? All right. Both. Here. Okay. Petition for repairs. DD two left H upper open ditch.
Forty.
Yeah, I, I have it signed by three people, but I'm sure that was Bolton and make and they said there's nothing else to do with it right now because it's part of DD two and they're going to look at it. So I just.
So I suggest to him, do you want his?
I, I just. Yeah, I just accepted it. It's.
I mean, it would.
You can't just isolate one part of it.
It was a lateral, but. I mean, I guess if he had two beds on, could go ahead and clean it, I suppose.
But you're removing a structure.
That's the only thing that does become an improvement. If he wants that removed, I didn't tell him that. That's what he wants.
Clean out and remove it for, remove structure.
Becomes an improvement then.
So I shared the concern with Bolton and make, so it'll be part of the.
Well, it's supposed to be part of the whole thing.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, it's been talked about a couple of times.
Yeah. Well, he's been on it for two years and signed petition.
Okay, so need to accept this at all or take your motion to accept the petition for DD two let reach. There's a second, a second. Any other discussion with that? Hearing that, I'll take right. Bye. Close. Carry.
I don't get it officially in the books, so.
They're off that way. Um.
I'm going to hold off one more week on that. Look at a few things.
Bolton may say anything where they're at and then look at DD two. I know it was part of your. I didn't know if they.
Yeah, I'm not sure how far they are.
You got lots of things going on.
Yeah. Well, that's why I asked, just so we're on a.
Top of my head, you got them all in there, but.
There's a lot going on.
Just that private one too. That's. Come on that.
I know they're going to get, sounds like they're going to get started on fourteen.
Yeah, they've been doing surveying and.
Okay. That goes down to Keys and Treadhill.
Oh, yeah.
That's another one. So, yeah. Yeah. That's on there. Oh, and then I am on drainage. I'm going to meet with pops here the next day or two, hopefully.
Okay.
Over there to look at that stuff, uh, west of the interstate. Or in New Joyce. So. They've been busy and.
Yep.
Get done, get a skin in their bed and see where we end up. So.
Is that ten?
DD two. Very good. Sounds right. Okay, any other drainage? No, how about claims?
Yeah, all kinds of things.
Claims. Sorry, regular claims. Yeah. You must do regular claims as well as the payroll.
How much that motion?
Also, no. All right, any other discussion? You're now, they're right. I, close. All right, any reports?
Yep. Monthly and recover.
Next, all right. Reports from the forty sixteen thousand and per port sixteen hundred. What's your approval reports or second?
I'll send it.
Any discussion? All favor I?
All right.
I, close. Your salary changes.
Stop that last week.
Yeah, payroll change for sheriff's office, Rick Anderson. Want you to approve the payroll change?
I'll make that motion.
Yes, sir. Any other discussion? All favor I?
All right.
Bye. Close. Here.
No license.
No, look your way. Policy does not need to discuss anymore. Uh, discussion on one draft ordinance and litigation. I have got stuff back from two of the three law firms that I've contacted. Just waiting to hear back from the third. So we'll leave that on there and it will be, should have it for next week. Just looking to decide which firm we'd like to choose. They all come with prior county experience in the city of the wind. One's firm that there's a lot of municipal land zoning stuff as well. So we'll just see where the numbers come out for sure. And then we can decide next week. Uh, twenty eighty agreement, shade of mental health advocate costs.
I was looking at my emails and telling that. So sorry about that. Got the newer version of it. So we're good.
You guys read through this?
Yes.
Figured it out. Just basically it's.
Shelley's got to watch us sign that one.
Okay. Yeah, it's basically just to, uh, goes all the way through the mental health region, but just providing paperwork that says we will pay a portion.
And then there's part of it from Hancock that's going to get.
Yes. Oh.
They'll figure out their share.
Yeah, they'll figure out their share and pay in as well. Yeah, it's basically just the paperwork for sharing the, our portion of the mental health region that we belong to. So.
So we made a motion to prove it. And she just needs to witness.
Yeah, motion to approve.
Motion to prove it.
And motion to approve twenty eighty. There's a second.
I'll second it.
Right. The roll call vote lower.
I.
Maybe.
Hi.
Stone.
I.
Hello, Sharon.
Hi.
I'm going to sign this one, okay? Okay. Brian can't still make it in last.
So it smells a little mustard there after the rain.
It's a hard rain. It came through your pride.
Oh, yeah.
Very. Soon it poured up here too.
Yeah, did up for a little bit out there too.
Uh, when we're back, go Melissa. Back from vacation, right?
You bet. Um, we, I met with Brooke at SBDC and a client last week, and then I've been getting ready for today's report for today's, uh, board meeting. So I'll have the report printed when you get here.
I hope that we can discuss more of the covenants on our development where we get another meter to.
Okay.
All right, that's it.
Yep.
Eleven thirty.
You bet. I'll see you then.
Uh, nothing, water and wastewater. Uh, department head discussion.
You good?
Uh, you?
Do you want me to say something?
Usually.
Just I had them invited to participate in the national, uh, national cyber election TTX here this week. So it's a cybersecurity event for upcoming election security. So.
That's probably a good idea.
Yeah, we're, they're thinking about it already. So it'd be. And we're, they're thinking about it already, so it'd be a bunch of different scenarios involving law enforcement, official, cybersecurity, IT. So we'll, we'll see what that looks like, so.
Tracy's asking about the survey, results of the survey, that's going until the end of the month, right?
Yeah, we decided on, I, we were stalled out at one oh one, so I said, we never put a deadline on it. Maybe that'll get people going, so Joel pushed it again and put a deadline on it, so.
I saw those on Facebook.
People don't seem to, and I'm bad at that too, unless. Yeah, there's a date on it, like, eh, I can do that later.
Yeah, so, yeah, we'll know that, or that the end of the month, so. Okay. Supervisor Weekly, yes.
I had nothing.
Good week then, right?
I, I really had nothing other than I did stop off as a mark crawl at the welcome center there. Looked at their preliminary map a little bit, I guess, where the turbines possibly go, so.
That's the way it sounds, so we bring in the copy so we can look at it this week also.
I was gonna Friday morning, but he was flying, he got his flight changed and he was flying out early, so.
Okay.
That got canceled.
I, I just met with Mason City Fire, Lake Mills and Forest City Ambulance Services. Dan was with there and Bob Rush, he and us coordinator for county was there as all, as well. Um, just had a good discussion on what we would do to go through with this. And I know there's been some concern with people over those corners of the county, get a little quicker response time. It, it will be probably a good idea to leave those services in place, kinda where we're looking at is not change anything. Just leave the boundary lines where they are. Mason City will always be available to go that way and for some reason Lake Mills or Forest City can't. Or if they need a higher level of care. They, they'll be able to go that way, so. Um, but I gave you guys numbers, that's just numbers on Mason City. You know, they're averaging four hundred eighty to five hundred calls a year, about sixty percent being transports. And then I think. Forest City's averaging probably around sixty and I haven't heard back from those yet, she was gonna give me the numbers on that, so. We were probably looking at. Twenty five, sixty year. Um, calls going, so I think everybody realizes that a full time service is. Gonna be a, this is kind of a necessity, cause Dan's compiling a list of what they've gotten, but no shows with all the departments. First responders in the county and there's more of them on the desk now than Dan's probably ever seen since he's been here, so, and that's just six months. It's unfortunate that it's, the volunteers are getting thin, it's just tough for everybody, so.
Cool, but then didn't help you guys any either.
No, no, I didn't either, so. It was a, it was a slower year actually last year with that stuff, cause I don't think a lot of people called. You know, for certain things, but this year it's, we're on pace for a normal year again, I believe, so.
Well, it looks that way by the calls.
Yeah.
They're on a record base.
Yeah, so. Um, so yeah, we just had a good meeting, kinda what's gonna happen or what could happen, it will go on. So the big thing is, is. Figuring out, next step is, I'm gonna work on this figuring out, uh, costs and taxation. Basically, and what it would cost everybody. So I will be getting you something, we'll start another survey, you said we could do that on our own, right?
You bet.
So I'll be getting you a list of questions, once I give a little rougher number on cost average. So you can put that in there and I think willing, be willing to pay for this much, you know, would you be willing to pay fifty bucks a year to. For an ambulance service, whatever that number may be, so just let me know, Richard.
Did you want me to get some cost on paging, what would it cost for? If Mason City came up?
Yeah, you know, what it take to get them into our system. I mean, would they just run off their handhelds and just? How would that?
If you.
As long as they stayed on fire dispatch, it would be fine, right?
Yeah, but you won't get a tone over it, so if you're gonna wanna tone, we're gonna have to do something a little different.
Okay.
Cause I was thinking about that, if, if they were awake all the time, but if they're, like they said, do twenty four, they're probably gonna, you know, take a nap time in there.
Right.
We'd have to have some kind of alarm system set with them.
Okay, so, so we may have to just.
Maybe buy a few pagers.
Just set them up in the, within our paging system, and just leave them at that facility that when whoever comes in for their shift, they just keep those pagers.
They do use that minimum one down there, so the two systems could talk as well. I know, I know, you don't like.
But at least it's like, nice deal with the radio system after that, it's just the, you have the initial page out, you can go on it, after that, it's pretty well easy, I think.
I'll get some numbers, I'll call on it.
Yeah, cause I mean, we'll have to, if there's a little maintenance or something, we gotta add into that to the middle, put that into this package, so. It's covered that way, but, so yeah, good meeting, we'll continue to meet here, like I said, I'll get some. More numbers figured out on what it's gonna take, so. That's all I have. Anything come up? I will be attending the Joyce grand opening after another Turkey Days, the Saturday, so.
Little late, Cattlemen's Bank, it's tomorrow night.
I got a ticket, I don't know if it's gonna fit.
Yeah, I don't plan on going, so. Alright, nothing else then, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Did I bring anything please?
It's not on the agenda, but you could talk with one of us after the meeting.
My name is Jaya, I work.